Welcome to the July 21st, 2020 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phone pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you'd like to speak today, please fill out a speaker request form and complete a speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chamber and return to Commission Office Manager Holly Hennings located at the lower right of the dais, which is your right. And then today we'll have a moment of silent reflection for Butch Kidderman and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner La Croix. So just a few words for Mr. Butch. Was Butch was a member of the Wall Volunteer Fire Department for 63 years, receiving the Pennington County Fire Officer of the Year and the Pennington County Lifetime Achievement Award for Fire Service. He was inducted into the Firefighters Hall of Fame by the South Dakota Fire Chiefs Association. Butch was also a member of the Wall Ambulance Service for six years. I'd like to thank Butch for his service and also a moment of silent reflection again for Mr. Butch.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And God bless Mr. Kidderman, Butch Kidderman, and his family. Prayers and blessings for him. Next is the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by La Croix.
Madam Chair, can we request to pull item number 13C, please, from the agenda?
We do have a motion by Drews, second by La Croix. Is that okay if we amend it by taking out Agenda Number 13 today? Okay.
13C.
13C. Yes, sir. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We can do roll call.
Aye.
Sorry. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for reminding me. Next is the consent agenda by Ms. Holly Hennings.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners use the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 7th, 2020; Approval of the minutes from the 2021 budget hearings scheduled June 17th, 18th, 19th, and 30th; Number seven is approval of the third quarter local emergency management planning grant with the state of South Dakota submitted by Emergency Management; and finally, number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of June 2020 from Human Resources and the Fire Administration.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anybody from the public who wish to speak on five through eight? If not, any commissioner would like to pull any items five through eight?
Number eight, sure.
Number eight, motion to approve number five and six and seven?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, second by DeSanto. Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Ross Connect, number eight, please.
Well, I just want to personally recognize and thank the volunteers, the fire service, Emergency Management, and the jail. These folks have it tough enough without the COVID-19 crisis, and now that we've got that, they're going that extra mile, so I just want to take this time to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect. Do we have a motion to approve number eight?
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by La Croix. Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine on the regular agenda is Ms. Cindy Moller, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ms. Cindy?
Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. Find the right memo here. So at the final budget hearing, we kind of left the, there were no more directions in which way you guys wanted to move with the provisional budget. And the one thing that I do need to know is whether you would like to utilize some of the CPI to bring us up to that 20% reserve goal or not, so I would ask for a motion in regards to that.
So there's two motions that we can approve today on that is a motion to move the current year's CPI and current growth in the calculation of 2020 consolidation levy, or move to utilize current year growth, current year's CPA, CPI and 285,000, approximately 0.665% of stored CPI in the calculation of the 2020 consolidation levy.
Question?
Commissioner DeSanto?
Hi Cindy, I'm just wondering what that, if we do use the stored CPI, what is the per 100,000 increase for?
$2.70 per 100,000.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I would move to use that second option.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, was to move the new, to utilize current year growth and current CPI and 285,000. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion, Ms. Cindy?
Okay, the second motion is to actually approve the 2021 provisional budget in the amount of $109,601,124 and to schedule the public hearing for consideration of the fiscal year 2021 budget for September 1st, 2020 at 10:00 a.m.
We have a motion.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect?
Second.
Second by La Croix. Discussion, please. If not, roll call. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Thank you this year for all the work you've done and the department heads for getting this budget where it is today. And Ms. Holly and Joan that have helped us put these budgets and these things together in order to get where we are today. I think this is the fastest we've ever approved a budget. With all your help, it made it a lot easier this year to get where we needed to go, so thank you very much. Number 10 is request for variance of ordinance 14, approval of second approach, Mr. Tanner Hancock. You need to take that N out of your name.
I know. See that? Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Tanner.
Good, thank you for your time. Yeah, I live in Wall on 1494 Golf Course Road. I think you guys have the papers. And I'm looking, I'm building a shop on my property and I'm looking for a second approach. I have just under 13 acres there and my house approach is right on the section line. I had to come in 2012 with the Commissioners to get approved of that. And it's for a shop for personal use, for kids, and too much junk in my garage, so need it.
It looks like the Highway Department is in favor of this approach, so do we have a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by Drews. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'm in favor of this for the simple fact that you kind of follow in the procedures. You know, I seen, looked back at the history on it and I think you did the appropriate thing and you contacted the Highway Department. I think as Commissioner, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good day.
Roll call. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good day, sir.
Thanks for coming in.
Item 11, items from Highway. First is the Nemo Bridge Repair Project Change Order Number Two.
Good morning, Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. You have in front of you here the change order for the bridge, to fix the bridge that collapsed on July 1st, I believe, is the date, in the amount of 173,220, let me get there.
Is that the 214 or the 173?
So it's 173,229,75 is the change order for the labor and material, or the labor for the contractor, Ainsworth Benning, to remove and replace the deck units. The 214 is the total with the deck units that we have ordered from Forterra. The amount of the deck units was 39,626.
So do you need?
So we've ordered the deck units from Forterra off of our annual supplies contract. We have a contract with them that you guys approved back in probably February, so that's how we ordered the deck units.
So Joe, it's 173,229,75 that you need on the change order today?
That is correct.
Okay, sir.
And I do want to point out that this wasn't budgeted for in our 10% cut, and this will need to come out of that 10%. I've got a memo to Holly with some other things that weren't accounted for in our 10% cut, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
So Joe, the total's about 214?
Correct.
So that would include replacing five decks?
Eight deck units.
Eight decks?
Yes, so there's three 50-foot deck units, so those are the middle spans, the ones that are collapsed, and then there's five 30-foot spans, the shorter ones on either side.
And that would be replacing the rails and resurfacing with the?
They're going, they're going to remove the rails and paint them, as well as painting the substructure. It was indicated on the 2018 inspection report that the substructure was in need of painting, that's showing signs of rust and stuff like that.
So when it's all said and done, that bridge will pretty much just be a new bridge?
Correct. I believe there's five units that aren't going to be replaced. That doesn't have that.
I believe we discussed yesterday there was going to be five that would not be replaced.
Correct.
But they gave the bridge a life expectancy of another?
Another, those deck units that are, were not replacing another decade or so.
Yeah. And I think you did a really good job putting this together in such a short timeframe.
I appreciate that. It was definitely a lot of work that we didn't foresee, so.
Madam Chair. Commissioner La Croix?
You know, Joe, yeah, I like what Mr. Ross Connect said, you know, appreciate you guys working hard and get this done as quick as possible and having a meeting with the residents and giving out the information of what's going on. But I also understand as a Commissioner that, you know, emergencies happen like this, and so with that 10%, I understand that. So, but I appreciate you bringing that board and giving us the heads up on it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner La Croix.
Do you have a motion?
Couple of things, sorry, Mr. Drew. Joe did a presentation for the Nemo Road District out there, basically the whole area. We appreciate everything you did, showing them what type of bridge it was, what had failed on the bridge, all the questions that you had answered, Joe. We also like to thank the Volunteer Fire Department, Jerome came, Emergency Management Dustin came, thank you, and Lifelight actually came because of the emergency services. We did have a deputy out there from Pennington County. We also had a deputy from Lawrence County, and three Commissioners, so it was well attended, well done, and thank you for your time and your service you did out there because you did your due diligence. I know we didn't make everybody happy out there, but bottom line, at least we were there to tell them what was going on and make sure that the emergency services were there, whether that bridge was up or not, so thank you, Joe. Now Commissioner Drews, a motion?
I'd make a motion. Second.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hancock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12, Emergency Management, Dustin Willett?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commission. Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. The first item there.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you. This is just the few, a few graphs out of that senior leadership brief that we had been putting together in the EOC. I've been keeping those graphs up just to see those trend lines. I'll email this to you, Commissioner DeSanto. So again, it's just a matter of being able to get a quick visualization of our total new and active cases in South Dakota, our trend lines in terms of total cases, recovered cases, active cases, and hospitalizations and deaths in Pennington County. Is that one graph with the, with the five lines on it? And then that last one is Pennington County active cases, and you can see kind of the up and down trend line.
So Dustin, the public can't see what you're saying, so maybe explain a little bit about, are you just in here?
Absolutely. So the graphs that I, again, this was the senior leadership brief that was made to, available to the senior leadership throughout the duration of this. And we've got graphs that just show the trend line in our, in our temporary emergency homeless shelter for COVID-positive patients. The change in colors there were while we were at the Civic Center, we had two, basically two shelter operations going on under one roof. We had COVID-positive, known tested COVID-positive, and then we also had symptomatic. At the time that that shelter was operational, we didn't have the capacity to do rapid testing on everyone, so we had folks there that were symptomatic that we did not know the result on. So those were two separate kind of populations, that's that blue and that orange. When we transitioned up to the 725 North Lacrosse Facility, our partners at Oiata Health were incredibly generous in being able to basically immediately do those rapid tests so that when we had a symptomatic but unknown positive, we could get test results back, usually within just an hour or two. So now at 725, all we have are COVID-positive. So you see the, the blue color go away in that graph because we're no longer sheltering symptomatic, we're only sheltering known COVID-positive homeless. So that's the discrepancy there. The next graph is just a, and this is data straight off of the South Dakota Department of Health website, the daily testing results and COVID-tracking metrics that they provide. So this second one, again, is just new cases and active cases by day, and these, again, this blue and orange graph is South Dakota as a whole. And you can see, again, some variability up and down, certainly less than what our peak was back in mid-May, early May, but you can see the variability there. That second one is kind of what we use to keep a pulse on what's happening in Pennington County. These are total cases ever in Pennington County, the number of cases that are recovered, the number of cases that are active, the number of hospitalizations at Monument in Rapid City, and then that very last line are unfortunately the deaths that we've had in Pennington County, people with a Pennington County address from COVID-19. So you can see that our, you know, most importantly, management by objective, our objective was to not overwhelm healthcare, and you can see that those Monument Health hospitalizations have been trending down since mid-June and are even lower today on, this was from yesterday, so July 20th, we had 15 total hospitalizations here in Rapid City. So that number continues to drop. Obviously, those top two lines, the total cases and the recovered will just continue to climb, there's really no value in looking at those, other than seeing that the ratio stays about the same between total cases. You can see that things move about the same. Our active cases, our recovered cases, our hospitalizations are all staying relatively constant with some, some day-to-day variability. And then that last one is simply nothing but a trend line with Pennington County active cases. And similar to the state of South Dakota, you can see that back in early June was when we had our peak. We had another small peak right in the beginning of July, and then we've, again, some variability by day, but, but a general downward trend with a daily spike here and there. And keep in mind, again, just as when we went through the last several months of these COVID statistics, it's based on testing, and testing changes daily depending on, you know, whether there's mass testing events going on in healthcare facilities or first responders. So really, all that data is driven by how many tests are being conducted and reported to the Department of Health.
So the cases are, active cases are meaning being tested or sent away to be tested?
Active cases are just being what's reported by the South Dakota Department of Health. So those are test results that have been reported to Department of Health.
So there's been many people reported, but not many people hospitalized with COVID?
You know, I think, and I don't have the, the exact number in front of me, I think the, again, up into the 40s was, was as high as I ever saw hospitalizations, and at this point, we're down to 15.
This is in Pennington County?
Yes.
Oh, South Dakota, do you know the number of, basically the cases and how many people were hospitalized and how many deaths?
So as of yesterday, current hospitalization, again, the daily hospitalization fluctuates, goes all over the place. Yesterday, there were 65, that's on that front sheet up at the top there. There have been 118 deaths across the state, almost 7,000 recovered, and almost 8,000 confirmed cases. So our active cases in South Dakota right now are in that 800 range.
So Dustin, the hospitalizations here at Monument, not necessarily were all Pennington County?
No, in fact, so in western South Dakota and even some of the surrounding states, it's basically Monument Health's service area, which, which extends even into other states out here in western South Dakota. They're the facility that if there is, if there is a need to hospitalize a COVID-positive individual, that, that person is sent to, to Monument Health in Rapid City. So those, you know, folks from Pine Ridge Hospital, anywhere where there's COVID-positive folks, Monument Health here in Rapid City is the facility out here that's staffed and designed to take care of those people. So those aren't, those aren't necessarily reflective of just Pennington County cases, it's, it's the wider Monument Health service area.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair. Mayor Kathy of Hill City just wanted to extend her thanks and gratitude for your department and their services when this all started. They said it really, they were really satisfied with the way that came together and that you united those smaller communities like Hill City.
Awesome. Well, I appreciate that being passed along. Totally a team effort, and Emergency Management never wants to be needed, but, but when the need arises, we're glad that we're able to step into that role and perform for, for the county and the city, so thank you.
Thank you. Item B, 12B.
I just put my, there we go. All right, so costs for the temporary emergency homeless shelter. So back in early May, when we started spinning up operations for the shelter at the Civic Center, we needed to fund that. So I came before this body, as well as the Rapid City Common Council, and requested commitments of $75,000 from each entity for a total of $150,000 of spending authority for shelter operations. We had actually forecasted that, that it may be as high as twice that. We were anticipating up to potentially 300,000 to take those operations through the 26th of June, which was our, our initial forecasted end date. We were, we were granted that, that $150,000 of spending authority, and fortunately, we did not need to, to come back and supplement that. That carried us through the 26th of June, and then the decision was made by city-county leadership to carry on operations. That's when we began transitioning over into the Lacrosse Facility. That initial allocation of 75 and 75 for the total of 150,000 in spending authority carried us through about July 3rd. On July 3rd, we had expended all of those funds. The reason that this was all kind of last minute is we had some very significant invoices all come at the very end. We had some final cleaning costs of the Civic Center and some of those larger invoices all just piled in at the end. So at this point, we've been running, obviously continuously, we never had a break in service. That funding ran out on, on July 3rd and to the tune of, we spent 149,933 by, by that June 3rd. So we have some invoices that we've incurred since then, and certainly we have some ongoing daily costs of keeping that shelter operational. So the request before you is to commit another $75,000 from the city and the county. I attended the, the city council meeting last night, and the mayor brought that forward and council approved $75,000 commitment from the city, and so I'm here before the commission today to request another $75,000, which will bring that, again, total to $150,000 in spending authority. At this point, it's forecasted that, that that allocation will carry us through to whenever this shelter transitions into something else. So I don't necessarily anticipate needing to request more funds, and I should also note that in meetings with representation from this board, county auditor, city finance, and the representative from the Planning District that's working with the Governor's Cares Act allocation, most if not all of these costs will be recoverable through that Cares Act allocation to Rapid City, Pennington County, and we are certainly pursuing that reimbursement process in conjunction with the Auditor's Office for those Cares Act dollars.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I would make a motion to authorize the addition of another $75,000 for this purpose.
Moved by Drews?
Second.
Second by La Croix. Discussion, Commissioner Ross Connect?
My only question, Dustin, is when we were at the Civic Center, we were leasing that space at the Civic Center, and now that we own the facility where this is at, I just would, would have thought that would have been a little less than 75. I mean, I'm totally in agreement with it, but I just wonder now that we're in our own facility, our own utilities.
So costs fluctuate depending on the census of the shelter, how many people we're taking care of, when we need to order PPE, how much PPE we're going through. The, on average, the daily costs of operation that included everything at the Civic Center were somewhere in the $5,000 to $6,000 a day range. Our costs right now at North Lacrosse are somewhere in the $2,000, $2,500 a day range. So we've, we've cut the operational costs by more than half, and certainly leasing the facility is part of that, but by no means the, the only or even the most significant. We've been able to, because we're dealing with a smaller facility, a smaller census, and only COVID-positive folks, the staffing has been able to be significantly decreased. It's a much smaller facility, so our, our daily cleaning fees are significantly decreased. Our numbers have been low, so our laundry and food service have been decreased. So we have decreased costs across the board for the north, the north 7, or the 725 North Lacrosse Facility.
Well, it does say up to, doesn't mean you're going to spend all 75,000, so.
Correct, correct. That's my question.
Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto?
Hey Dustin, the other day we talked about how long this might go on. Are we coming up with an end date that we want to, I mean, we talked about $2,500 a day to take care of one or two people, maybe exorbitant, and so I wanted to find out what our thoughts are on setting an end date for this unless we obviously have a significant increase in the number of people that we're taking care of.
I don't disagree with that assessment, Commissioner. There is a meeting already scheduled on the calendar between myself and law enforcement, Sheriff's Office, Police Department, primarily Sheriff's Office. In terms of when we sunset this facility, I think the desire for everyone is to sunset as, as soon as we are able to, and I think everyone recognizes the costs in relation to the, the numbers that we're serving. Part of that equation is, is what happens to those individuals that, that we currently have in the shelter, and with, working with Barry in the Sheriff's Office, you know, that, that load typically gets picked up then, or, or would naturally be served by the mechanisms that we already have in place. So Sheriff's Office is a primary stakeholder in working through what the other side of that equation is when we sunset that facility. We have a meeting scheduled in about a week to talk about that, and after that meeting, we will probably very quickly try to get, again, the political stakeholders together and the other stakeholders in the community together to work through a, a least tentative sunset date, and, and right now, the best guess is, is probably another month, maybe month and a half, but we're absolutely working towards sunsetting that facility and, and being able to meet the need that we are currently meeting through a more reasonable, sustainable economical method. So yes, those decisions or those discussions are, are paramount. They run parallel in, in the operation of the, the shelter, so right along with how do we keep it running, those, those parallel discussions are, when are we able to close it down? it down? When are we able to sunset it?
Okay, thank you. Also, follow-up, Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
At the last facility, it appears that we had to hire a contractor to do the sanitization. And I haven't had a chance to look at the numbers or the, the breakdown that you sent us. I, I think you sent us a breakdown of costs. Were there more than one bid on that sanitization project? And I think there was, there was two bids, I believe. And what brought you to the decision of who you were going to use to do that sanitization project?
So I think we need to be careful with the language of bid. I, I solicited four quotes. We didn't meet any threshold for, for South Dakota bid law or county bid law. The amounts weren't that high. So these were, these were quotes of what it would cost to clean and disinfect the Rushmore Hall. We actually had four, ranging anywhere from about $5,000 or $6,000, I think, all the way up to $30,000. The low bid, we, we sent out a, a request for quote that was very specific in what we were looking for, and it included physical cleaning, you know, wiping down, scrubbing the surfaces, as well as decontamination. The lowest, the lowest quote that came in did not offer those services. It was strictly decontamination. So it didn't even meet the, the, the request for quote that we sent out. The request for quote that we selected was the next one up from that. It was the lowest quote that provided both cleaning and sanitation, or sanitization of the facility. So we selected the lowest quote that we got that met what we needed to have done. When we did that, we certainly received some blowback from the, the individual that quoted the low price, but really, the, the, the price that was returned by that company didn't include half of what we needed done. So it was a, it was an easy decision in terms of when we sent that out and asked for quotes, we selected the lowest quote that, that met the requirements that we sent out. Does that answer your question?
And hence, we hear the rest of the story.
There you go.
Thank you. Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First of all, you know, thanks Dustin for, for the update, and I, I do think La Crosse property is probably the most appropriate for what's going on and, and getting those tests back quickly, more quickly, and, and being able to keep the ones systematic that we know are actually need to care. And, you know, I, I support the motion on the floor and to keep this moving forward, and, and that we learn as we go. You know, I mean, I think we, we planned for a, a big turnout and got a small one, but I think the La Crosse facility is gonna meet our needs for, the immediate needs for now, and so I'm kind of glad to see that we're there because that is a little more appropriate place than an open room, I think. And so I appreciate, I just wanted to express that. I think La Crosse is a good, good use for it and good, and we're saving the taxpayers money on this.
It's working well. Thank you, Commissioner.
So Dustin, how many people do we have in there right now?
So participants being served today is two.
And how many workers do we have in there?
There's always, for, for safety's sake, there's always at least two on duty.
Okay.
So we always, and every now and then, there's a third, just doing some inventory clerical stuff, but by and large, the shifts are, are two shelter workers.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Okay, Commissioner, or Sister, roll call. Ms. Kara?
DeSanto.
Aye.
Druze?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Hecock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Item C, so this is a surplus. So part of the concurrent operations, in fact, we, we just completed that, or, or made significant progress yesterday. Part of this whole operation, one of the reasons we had that 26th date in June was, was rehabbing, cleaning, sanitizing, getting the, the Rushmore Hall turned back over to management at the Civic Center for, for uses that they already have lined up for that. So that required, once we transitioned all of our operations up to 725 North La Crosse, we immediately began the process of demobilizing everything that we'd done in the Rushmore Hall in order to support the shelter operations. So the initial setup at Rushmore Hall, the initial build-out of the showers primarily, was financed by a generous donation from the John T. Vekuric Foundation of $25,000, and we spent pretty much all of that, building that facility out to support the shelter operations that we were anticipating. As we transitioned out of that facility, all of those facilities need to be removed. So some of the things, some of the bigger items outside of the hardware and, and, you know, we, we moved shower curtains up to the 725 North. We've used everything we can in transition up to the 725 facility, but the large water heaters, the nine shower surrounds, and so we, the washer and dryer are up at North La Crosse as well. So the large water heaters, which were a bulk of that cost, we're able to store at the Civic Center for future use. The Civic Center has graciously offered to, to keep those on-site in a storage facility should we ever need to, to swap that facility back over again. However, the shower surrounds, the nine shower surrounds that we put in, I asked across county organizations if there was any need for those surrounds and the sinks that we went with them, the big utility sinks that went with them. And there was no need in, in county offices or organizations. And so the request before you is to declare surplus for the purpose of donation, those shower surrounds and utility sinks and some of the associated hardware.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Druze. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Dustin, after our meeting last week, I kind of thought, started thinking about this, and I'm wondering if there's a possibility that we will have a resurgence, as many are talking about, in the fall that could possibly force us to have to expand our, our services. Again, I am wondering if there's a possibility we could find a place, I know they're gonna take up a lot of room, but I think the cost of those shower surrounds is probably quite high, and I'm wondering if there's a place we can store them at least through January or through, when this COVID situation seems to drop down, and we know that we're not gonna have a resurgence, so that we don't wind up having to turn around and buy them again.
So I'll visit with you, Commissioner. There, there just simply isn't the square footage anywhere available to store those shower surrounds. That, that is probably the driving, the, the biggest point of the, of the decision to surplus those for donations is, is we just don't have the space to store those, you know, once you take them out of the wood frame, they're a flimsy fiberglass surround. It's just the surround, and, and we just don't have a, a reasonable, adequate place to store them.
Dustin, is there, what is the cost of, what were the, what was the cost of those shower surrounds?
So again, the, the speed at which we sent that up, they're not all the same. We, we basically cleaned out the wind supply warehouse with what they had on hand in order to, to get that up and running as, as fast as possible. I think they ranged from very, very basic, a matter of, of, of maybe $100, $200. I think the most expensive ones, one or two that we had to, to get that were more expensive, just to get the numbers that we needed. And then one was larger to accommodate individuals with disabilities, mobility challenges. I think the more expensive ones were probably about 400, 400 or 500 at the most. Most of them were, were in the $100, $200 range, I believe.
So my thought is, is that's about 1,800 bucks if we averaged it out at $200 per surround. You can prob, we can probably, as a county, and obviously this will be up to the other commissioners, but as a county, we can probably rent a storage facility for about $65 to $75 a month that would accommodate those, 10 by 18 or something like that. And we could rent one of those and wind up spending maybe $400 between now and January or February, as opposed to turning around and spend another 1,800 or 2,500, somewhere in between there, to replace them. Would that be a thought? I'm asking the rest of you commissioners if you think that, that's a wise idea or not.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I like your train of thought, Mark, but I also have some problems. When you start moving these things around more than once, you got more risk for damage. You know, they're big, you're gonna have to do a flatbed to haul them, loading and unloading, you got that risk. You know, and then you're talking to labor to, to move and to and from and so forth. You know, I, I understand where you're coming from, but the residual from, from holding on to them, you know, I don't know if it's really worth it at this point in time. If we have the cares, you know, quite, there's quite a bit of the cares funding that's gonna, could be available. So if a resurgence comes, I think we're, we're better prepared. And detox, that La Crosse, I'm, I'm serious, that's a lot better facility there than, than setting up another one that's that big, I think. Just my thoughts.
From emergency management standpoints, the logistics are not undoable, but our, our preference would not to, to, to not engage in that. But that's, that's just emergency management. So we'll certainly execute the will of the commission.
Okay. Follow-up, Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto, Roskinick has something to say, and then I'll, I'll.
If they, Dustin, if they go the surplus, do they get stored and then we have to wait to surplus them?
Uh, no, no, we, there are a lot of moving pieces to this. The, the donation would, would basically happen immediately.
Right, and it wouldn't make sense to just do the shower surrounds. You'd wanna store all of it if you were gonna store anything. You wouldn't just store the shower surrounds because the drains and the heads and the sink, utility sinks and everything probably cost more than those shower surrounds. Bottom line is, Commissioner DeSanto, I think the most they ever had in that facility was 19. We were expecting a lot more people to be in that facility, and it didn't happen. So at the peak, it was probably 19, 18, 19 people, or 14 is what Dustin is saying. So I think we could accommodate that in either La Crosse or find a different facility for less cash flow.
So in all, and, and crystal ball, nobody has a crystal ball. We don't know what, what the fall will look like, or what numbers will be, or what will happen. In terms of trying to anticipate different possibilities, you know, the first question would be, what numbers are we expecting? What are we gonna have to provide? The next huge question would be, is the 40,000 square foot Rushmore Hall an appropriate location? And even if it's determined that it is, the question would be, would Rushmore Hall be available? If they're not closed down, if, if, if things have not canceled, then that square footage simply isn't available. And the 725 North La Crosse facility is soon to be on the rolls to be sold, so that facility might not be around either. So unfortunately, should the need arise, we have learned an incredible amount. We, we grow through adversity and challenge, and, and the office has learned an incredible amount. But if the need arises later on in the year or some other year for something similar, we've learned a lot of lessons, but we would probably be in a completely different facility than the first two that we've used. So really, really hard to forecast what we would need, where we would need it, and how we would need it.
Okay. Well, I think with Lloyd's point that we're gonna, we'd have to pay for labor and so forth, it probably would wind up exceeding what we'd save anyhow. But I was gonna point out that, yeah, the La Crosse facility, how long's it gonna be available for? Not, not too long. So anyhow, let's move forward with this, and, and hopefully we'll hear from you in a week or so when we are gonna sunset the whole situation anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Kara, would you have a motion by LaCroy, second by Druze? Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Druze?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Hecock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item D, sir.
The last one I have for you is, is we had some, some very unfortunate medical emergencies and issues arrive with the management of that shelter. We contract, we originally contracted with a, a shelter organization called Where All Women Are Honored. They were amazing. They stepped to the plate and set up the entire staffing piece and management, how the shelter was going to work, how the shelter worked daily, the meals, the care of the participants. That was simply contracted and handed off to the shelter organization, Where All Women Are Honored. That organization was dealt a significant blow in some COVID-19 illness that, that rendered the, the administrative side of that organization incapable of, of even communicating, let alone signing and, and running the, the invoice process and, and paying their workers. So we had originally contracted with Where All Women Are Honored. They invoiced us once a week, and we would, I, I, that was a, back on the, I believe the 22nd is of May, is when I came before the chair and vice chair in order to request an exemption so that we could turn that pay voucher in, in the weekly voucher cycle to get those folks paid in a timely manner. So with the, the medical impact to Where All Women Are Honored, that whole process came to a screeching halt, and we've got folks up there at that shelter that have been working for three weeks, three pay periods now, without receiving a check. And a lot of them have been working for the last two weeks without receiving a check. We exhausted just about every, not just about, every option we could come up with, we ran and chased. I had a very, very productive meeting with the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office, the county auditor, county HR. Auditor Al was upstairs, so we even got the, the state auditor to weigh in on how we move forward and how we're able to keep that shelter running. We, we did lose a couple people that, that couldn't absorb that, that lack of, of paycheck coming. What we came up with was to, instead of contracting with Where All Women Are Honored, is to do individual contracts with the folks that are willing to, to work that facility. We ran that through, we got the language approved with the, the state's attorney. It's not an ideal situation by any stretch of the means, and we're, continue to look for better alternatives, but this is a way to keep, keep that shelter running. Without this, we will, we will lose the workforce and hence lose the shelter immediately. So the ask before you is, instead of the single Where All Women Are Honored contract that I was submitting in weekly vouchers, I am asking the board's permission to submit, and then there's probably gonna be 10 to 12 of those individual contracts through the weekly voucher cycle. So it's the same amount of money as, as the single contract, it's just spread across multiple individual contracts. But I would ask the board's permission to submit that to the auditor's office on the weekly voucher cycle in order to get those people paid.
Dustin, have you talked to the auditor, Ms. Cindy, about this already?
Absolutely.
And you're in agreement with that, Cindy? And your, your amounts are between 13, 16,000?
That was for the, the Civic Center. Our, our weekly costs, now that we're doing two people per shift for 24-hour coverage, are in that $6,000 to $7,000 range.
Okay, per week?
Yes.
For how many people?
Two. Well, two at a time. So there's 24-hour coverage, three shifts, so anywhere between, anywhere between six and nine people a day.
There you go. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to authorize submission of shelter-related staff contract costs on a weekly basis for payment.
Motion by Druze?
Second.
Second by LaCroy. One more follow-up. Went out of my head. I forgot what I was gonna say. Sorry. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Druze?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinick?
Aye.
Hecock?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. We couldn't do this without your continued support.
Thanks, Dustin.
Thanks, Dustin. Item 13, new position titles, 13A ratings for Highway Department.
Morning Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. Madam Chair, we'll address the questions that you had sent to me as well with this presentation. I, I, first of all, I want to say thank you to Joe and his team at the Highway Department. This, I believe, is the fourth iteration of the job descriptions that they've developed. And to help make this grouping possible, we actually set up a team meeting at the Highway Department a couple weeks ago, where we interviewed people that are actually in these positions to have a better understanding of what they do on a daily basis, the decisions that they make on a daily basis, and then we're able to rate those positions accordingly. And then we're able to rate those positions accordingly. Within the Highway Department, you'll see on here, there's some new positions. So one is the Administrative Assistant. That's just basically adding that position to their department. They've, we have Administrative Assistant twos across the county. The different tasks and responsibilities that they have vary considerably by department. So they developed a job description specifically for that. This won't add anything to their cost, but does give them the ability to have a person in that role as their current person would move up and take on more responsibilities.
So, John, do you have, last time we asked for the start amount and then the change of, which is a B twenty-three, what's that amount, it ends up, and what's the amount of change?
For the new positions, there is no change because, again, those are new positions. So there's nothing to say there's an adjustment. I guess I'm not able to answer that because these didn't exist previously.
Well, Joe would have been at a position already and then Joe would move into a B twenty-three. Not Joe and maybe Mark or something, but I'm just using Joe's name.
Sure.
So his start amount, where he was before, no matter what position he was, should be amount. And then because it's a new position, where does it start at and what does that change?
I understand. So on the second page, you'll actually see the information about the wage changes with regard to existing positions that were changed. With regard to the additional costs or whatever may be associated with the new ones, that's gonna be dependent upon what people are promoted and/or moved within the department. I can't forecast that. So I don't know what they will do with regard to those. Within the Highway Department, currently they have Highway Maintenance Worker and they have a Foreman. What we've done is put three total steps prior to the Foreman in place with this new structure. So you'll see those on here as new positions as well, B twenty-one, B twenty-three and B thirty-one. Those are all underneath the Foreman and then, again, helps them bring people in at a wage that will allow them to recruit. So currently, they recruit around eighteen dollars and twenty cents an hour. The rating that they had been proposed for that position took that pay down to fourteen dollars an hour. We already know that that's not realistic, we're not able to recruit at that. By giving that a rating of B twenty-one for the entry level wage, that takes it back up to about sixteen dollars, still two dollars less an hour than what we currently have. So there's a mix of things and it depends on where they actually spot their people within the department. I can't say with any specificity what will happen based upon movement in the department.
So each department will have a paper that says, like Holly started and this is where Holly's at now. When do we get those papers to see the total amount?
We won't have any of that, Madam Chair, until we actually make movements at the end of the year to get people onto the new scale. Without that, we, I can't say, the departments can't say. Again, they have forecasts for their budgets that they've turned into the auditor. I don't have that data from the departments.
So how did we come up with the number that was gonna be the change of next year?
Yes, ma'am.
If we didn't know any of the numbers and we don't know any of the movements?
Correct.
How did we know and guesstimate how much we needed for a budget for Gallagher study?
You bet. So Gallagher actually determined that for us. It wasn't completed in-house. They completed all those estimates based upon their study and where they recommended these positions be rated.
Right, and we're changing their study by changing some of the positions at this time, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Different positions. So are the amounts that significant? Do you believe that's gonna change that number of what they told us?
I think there's gonna be some adjustments, but again, some of these are rated lower than they had been initially. So you're gonna see a balance, I believe. I don't think you're gonna see any massive increase, but those numbers are gonna come from the departments to the auditor. They don't come to me, so I don't have that information. My gut feeling, as I take a look at these, is it's gonna be extremely similar to what the forecast was for the next year's budget.
Okay.
I don't foresee anything major happening with regard to increases or decreases.
Thank you, John, because that was my worry. If we start at a starting point and then we go, okay, we're changing all these positions and these positions are gonna be a lot higher, is the total amount for what we budgeted gonna be way past? And we are trying to get ahead on our bottom line for our.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinect?
John, on future, in future reports, you got the status and you got the DBM.
Yes.
Well, a lot of other folks read these reports, they can get online and read them. You think we could start identifying what that acronym is? So a lot of people might say, what's a DBM? Because, you know, I have to look it up once in a while.
I would imagine, no. So there's too many acronyms, especially in the HR world. I think that's pretty common, FMLA, FLSA, I mean, we have acronyms for everything. DBM, again, Decision Bad Method.
Right.
So it's basically the way the positions were rated and the values placed upon those positions based upon responsibilities, decision-making, things that those people all do for the county. No, thank you for that.
And something that would help me, just so that I can get prepared to the switching over to Gallagher, would be a B twenty-three and then if it's a seven-step process, what that beginning wage is per hour.
Oh, sure.
For each one of those, so that I can, as we go into next year, I can sit there and say, well, B twenty-one, this is what they started out at, this is a good range. Just to help me transition into this whole new Gallagher.
No, and I, that's on me, so I apologize for that, Commissioner. I know that we've talked about that in the past. I sent out the form with all of the ratings and all the pay scales. So I can definitely have that added to this. The only thing that I added to this was the second page with regard to a couple of positions, the Highway Mechanic and then the Office Manager position. So you'll see the pay scales there and the rating changes. But for the other ones that were new, again, it would have been helpful to have those on there and I did not do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
I'd make the motion to approve the new positions, the DBM ratings for the Highway Department for 2021 implementation as follows. Administrative Assistant two, B twenty-three, Apprentice Heavy Highway Worker, B twenty-one, Journeyman Highway Worker, B twenty-three, Elite Highway Worker, B thirty-one, and Heavy Equipment Mechanic, B twenty-four, Office Manager, C forty-two, and Assembly Engineer at C forty-two.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Roskinect. Any other discussion? Not? Roll call.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinect?
Aye.
Hakkok?
Aye. Motion carries. Item B, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item up is a continuation from our meeting of the seventh, July seventh. So after further discussion with the departments, we actually were able to finesse and correct some of the maybe errors or things that had been not considered initially with the first one under promotions. With regard to this, the rest of the memo is the same as what we had in the past. COC information with regard to the new hires, the options we have for five steps within the first twelve months and/or granting five steps at point of hire. The promotions actually updated things, so we changed everything so that promotions and reclasses are considered the same. It's a movement into a higher-paid position. What this does is give some discretion to the departments if it's a reclass, a traditional reclass under our current process where they're not moving into a leadership position. It still allows the departments to have the discretion to give a smaller increase than we had initially stated. So initially, we said five percent increase across the board for all movements up. This allows, again, those departments where they have, say, for example, it's a Deputy One or Deputy Two. It's not necessarily a promotion under our current understanding what promotions are. But this then would allow them to still have an increase, but not the same increase that people would get if they move into a position of leadership.
That's where I was looking at, John, I couldn't figure out why you had the two percent and the five and now that was when Brian Mueller came up last meeting because they don't give as much as a five percent increase. So at first, I'm like, where'd you get the two percent from?
Yes, ma'am. This helps them differentiate between those movements within the department. So again, if they're not moving into that position of leadership, it's still an increase in responsibility and it gives them the ability to discern between those two types of movements within the department.
Any other questions? Not? Motion?
Madam Chair. Move to approve the compensation policies and practices presented to authorize Human Resources to update the employee handbook and reflect the changes for the use effective January first, twenty twenty-one.
Motion by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by DeSanto, discussion?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, if I could, it would be for the first pay period of twenty twenty-one, which actually begins, I believe, on December twenty-seventh, instead of January first.
That's what I said.
Okay, thank you.
Second is okay with that.
You're okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
All right. Roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinect?
Aye.
Hakkok?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item thirteen C was removed, so we're on item fourteen with case management software upgrade. Public Defender Eric Witcher, please.
Morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner. Eric Witcher, Public Defender. I'm seeking a motion to approve the purchase of a case management software system from Legal Edge, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars to be payable in twenty twenty. I prepared a memo for the commission earlier. Currently, what we have is we have in a case management system software, but it's obsolete and we have to help with our day-to-day systems. Our IT department, over the years, has basically built another one and then we use our case management system that's sort of an off-the-shelf which you would have purchased at the county at some point in time to simply, we scan our documents and store them long-term in that case management system. For our day-to-day access, it's called PD Cases. Your IT department has built it. The difficulty now is, having built that in-house, the functionality is great as our IT department is. It doesn't have, you know, the thousands of hours to put into an actual case management system that's just, that's robust enough for a general office to use. And, but so we've been sort of hobbling together these two systems and they worked okay for our purposes until this pandemic occurred. We are now working remotely with our attorneys at home and our limited staff in the office to help support them. And we've gone to, we tried to go to a paperless system, it's proved virtually impossible. We've done as best that we can, I think, with the stuff we have. But what this new software program would allow us to do is it truly be a paperless system. It's designed for a modern law office. We've searched for various case management systems. There is one that is designed specifically for a public defender's office. They have hundreds of clients across the country, most of which are counties like ours. And they're, so the reports and things like that, that I've asked our IT department to develop so that I can keep track of how many cases attorneys have, for example, how many cases they've been assigned this month, what kind of cases are we getting assigned? So you can have that real look at the data and for our management purposes. And then also, it's just really easy on the attorneys as they appear in court with their laptop. They just simply type the notes, it automatically bills. It's just a system that's designed for a very busy public defender's office. We, we had asked to look to buy this next year after this pandemic, but as we received guidance, it appears that the CARES Act will reimburse the county for this expenditure this year. So this is, we need it and it's an opportunity to have it reimbursed from the county. So based on that, I would ask for that motion and I understand your questions.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Roskinect?
Eric, I want to thank you for, you know, researching several different companies, not just pulling one. So obviously, you done your research and to me, for your office to run effectively, we're gonna need this and if we can get reimbursed down the road, it's even a bonus, so I'm in favor of it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ros, or?
Move to approve purchase of the case management software for Legal Edge to not exceed sixty thousand.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Roskinect. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Any idea of the timetable, Miss Tate?
Well, if the, if the board approves this, we're gonna start working on it immediately. My expectation, because what this does, it has to migrate all of our data from these two systems that we have to this new system, train our staff. So my expectation is this is gonna be a several-month process, but I don't have a specific timeline.
So if it's up and running by August fifteenth, you gotta integrate everything into it. I mean, you are talking several months before you got the finished project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Just a note, the twelve thousand dollar annual cost after this year, once COVID is gone, will no longer be, that will not be reimbursable through CARES, I don't believe.
It would not be, no.
Okay.
What, yeah, and what, in speaking with Lori at IT, they spend a lot of time and software programmer time trying to support our system currently and they're having difficulty doing so. So it's, instead of having more staff in-house, which a programmer costs seventy thousand a year or whatever that starting, don't quote me on that, but I think it's, they're, it's a high starting wage is part of what this cost is gonna be. And then also, right now, we are, we are still paying an annual fee, although it's not as much currently for the one that we have, so. Lori's here if you want to speak to that.
Ms. Lori?
Lori Wager, IT Director. Yes, it costs us about seventy thousand dollars plus a year to have a software developer on staff. And it's just not feasible for us to maintain multiple numbers of software developers when there's canned softwares like this that can be utilized instead of having a software developer in-house. For instance, right now, their software is running just fine. So we're not even really working on it. But tomorrow, something might have happened to it and then we have to have somebody there that knows what they're doing with it. So it's just, it's just not feasible anymore to do it for all these different departments. And so I was really happy that this opportunity came about, that we could possibly get some money from the CARES Act on it. It'll be very beneficial for them.
Yeah.
Give me any other questions?
No more.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Ms. Carr?
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinect?
Aye.
Hakkok?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item fifteen, Ms. Holly.
Commissioners, what you have in front of you is the Pennington County Resolution to Set the Hours of Operation for County Offices. When the board went restricted in, on March thirtieth, we changed the resolution and now this is changing it back. I will stand for any questions you may have. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy? Second by Hakkok? Any other questions? If not, roll call, please.
DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Roskinect?
Aye.
Hakkok?
Aye. Motion carries. Item B.
Okay, item B is just the status of the 2020 Commission Office Budget. At the last meeting, the board had requested an update in regards to where we were at. As I had indicated, we would have to also dip into that ten percent that the board asked for a reduction in. And so I have listed the items that have changed for us since that ten percent. And I will certainly answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Board, or motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinect. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Drews. Do you have discussion, Commissioner Drews?
Madam Chair, yes. Relative to the projector and such that we need timetable on that?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
We're starting to receive our parts right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. There has been a motion. Roll call, please. Can you tell me exactly what your motion was?
Acknowledge.
Holly, tell me your motion.
To acknowledge the 2020 Commission budget status.
Okay.
And to approve the sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-three total of change. Of the ten percent?
Yes. Did you get that, Ms. Carr? I'll have to re-listen to that, but yes, I'll get it. Okay, the total was sixteen thousand eight forty-three for the change, Ms.
Okay. The total was sixteen thousand eight forty-three for the change, Miss Care.
Okay. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Thank you.
Items from Chair and Commission members. Holly, do we have the paper on the waterways discussion? Are we going to do that at the next meeting?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any discussion from Commission members? Any questions? Not. Let's go to committee reports. Mark? You're on mute, Mark.
Thank you. I clicked the button twice. Had a library committee, committee meeting. Obviously, numbers are down at the library. And as COVID starts to break, and I'm sure the library numbers will go up, the drive-through is still very busy. There's been, there was a tour. I did not make it to the tour of the new air conditioning units and temperature control units that they were having installed. So that's all finished and done. And they came to an agreement with the Genealogical Society on how many books they're going to be able to store and that kind of stuff. So that got settled and resolved in, in a good manner. Fair Board meeting as well. Obviously, we're going forward with the fair. We have a great deal of cooperation from the Carnival Company that is going to be coming. As far as cleaning is concerned, they've just gone completely and totally out of their way and more than I think any of us expected as far as their ability to, to clean and sanitize and hold people accountable for, basically taking some self-control over themselves and doing what they're supposed to do to try and prevent the, the spread. And I think that's about it. Gary and I have been in some discussion about, with Joe Miller, about the Radio, Radar Hill Road project that's going to be happening and a possible, I guess I'd call it a double-edged sword for a workaround road when we have to shut down Radar Hill Road at the intersection of fourteen sixteen and Radar Hill Road. And we may be able to work with a contractor to possibly pay for that road. We'll see if, or possibly pay for all of it. So we'll see if we can't get that done and get that worked out so that it both benefits the county and the contractor as well. So I think that's about all I have to report. Gary can expand on that if he wants to.
Thank you. Next is Ron Ross Connect.
After the last Commission meeting, we did a Zoom building committee. It's probably one of the most productive building committees that I've been involved with. It lasted a good one and a half hours. And we, I think, one of the things that we focused on, or one of the items, was the surplusing of the LaCrosse Street facility, which I think is going to be moving along rather quickly. The other meeting, I know, that was up the Nemo Community Hall, which I now know where it's at. And I know what, how long Merritt Estes Road is. And I know that there's a lot of concerned citizens in the Nemo area. So myself, Deb, and Gary took it upon ourselves to face, I wouldn't say they're angry, but they look concerned. And we answered the questions the best we could. Joe did a fabulous job. And I thought, considering that only we could pastor, that a lot of things come together really quickly, showing that this county can do it. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Fire Service Board was one of the committees I was on. We did a Zoom meeting. We talked a lot about COVID reimbursement, some other areas that maybe we could get some help with. All the members that were on the Zoom and the Board for the Fire Service thanked us for the money that we had gave extra for their five-year and ten-year areas to move forward. I did go, again, with Commissioner Ross Connect and Commissioner Drews to the meeting out at Nemo Road. Appreciated everybody that was there. And it was a good meeting. And, and again, kind of a little bit contentious, but still hopefully answered their questions. So Commissioner Drews.
Gary, thank you. Yesterday, I did attend the, the annual National Association of County Officials' meeting. Obviously, this was not in person. This was scheduled to be held in Orange County, Florida. So we did it relative to essentially a Zoom-type meeting. The outgoing president was Marianne Borgerson from Nebraska, Douglas County, Nebraska. And the new officers include President Gary Moore of Kentucky. He's got a lot of background, a lot of experience relative to county work. First Vice President is Larry Johnson out of Georgia. And the second Vice President is Denise Winfrey from Illinois. Next year's meeting is scheduled about the same time in Austin, Texas. And we'll see where we go from there. Essentially, there are three thousand sixty-nine counties in the United States. Seventy-eight percent of the total counties are members of the NACO. One of the things that they do provide for us is considerable lobbying in Washington. They are responsible for obtaining the, the full funding for the payment in lieu of taxes, in which we are a recipient of those dollars. In fact, all of the counties in the Black Hills are recipients of those dollars. So appreciate the efforts that they've put into that. All sixty-six counties in South Dakota are members of the, of NACO also. Also, with the telephone conference meeting with the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, our state meeting is going to be held, that'll be held in September, I think the starting date on that is September fourteenth, if I'm not correct. And that would be held in Sioux Falls. And they did take a vote of the membership as to whether or not to hold that meeting. And eighty-three percent of those counties represented voted in favor of, of doing that. So I think several of us will be attending from Pennington County for that meeting. Also, the Chamber Board meeting last week, a lot of that dealt with what the Chamber and Elevate have to offer for local businesses, especially that have been impacted relative to the COVID. And I would just encourage any businesses, small businesses especially, to make contact with Elevate. They are assisting through Tom Johnson. They have been also trying to assist non-members to get them through this. One of the things that was reported last week was that, obviously, our unemployment rate has gone down from the high that we had in April. Our average weekly wages have gone up. And hotel occupancy has now continually increased in the last few weeks, as well as airport boardings out of Rapid City Regional. So things are on, on the, basically improving at this point in time. We just hope that that will continue to improve. So they, I think, I think that's really, really all that I have to report relative to that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, first of all, we have the Black Hills area of county commissioners and officials. This meeting this Friday, either by Zoom or in person. Again, we are hosting that here. Part of the discussion is going to be from, I'm terrible with names, Jennifer.
The Executive Director of Black Hills Council Local Governments.
Yeah.
I don't know how to pronounce her last name either.
Yeah, there you go. And from, from Black Hills, the local governments, and she's going to talk about the CARES Act and recovery and, and services and projects and so forth. And then we're also going to have some roundtable discussion about the COVID-nineteen, how it's affecting other counties. We'll have that going on. So if you have the time to attend, it's a, be a good briefing anyhow. We had no resolutions turned in to review at this point in time. So it's, it's going to be mainly a get-together to learn what's happening in our communities, our surrounding areas.
That's eleven-thirty here?
Yes.
In the Commission Office?
Right here.
Okay.
So we can spread.
Are you having food?
No, bring your own. Zack lunch.
E Y O.
Yeah.
You're there.
It's circumstances. That's how, how we're going to run it. So with that update, we could have, I don't know, did we get the legislator to respond? Okay, so I will bring that up. But we tried to get legislators to show up for, and give a report at every meeting. So. The other thing that I attended that's not on my list is CHI, it's called Collective Healing. It's a program that I've been part of for the last twenty months. And we, we'd come up with some, I encourage you to go to Facebook and look at CHI. That'll get you more information that you, it was a race relations, police and, police and community relations movement. And they came up with some recommendations, and we turned them over and had discussions with the Police Department. In fact, it was in Saturday's paper, if anybody read that. It was some of the work that we were doing. And we're in ongoing discussion. I think our next meeting is the twenty-eighth of this month. We're trying to get, get through some of the recommendations. And actually, my suggestion is to have a sit-down with, with the departments. It's kind of hard with Zoom. I mean, Zoom gets you by, but there's nothing like a face-to-face contact and discussions. And they've been going really good. Second meeting that I also attended was, actually, was the Youth City Council meeting. They actually, finally, this time, we did it in person down at the Civic Center, spread out and so forth. That meeting, I was not able to stay for the whole thing, but several of us were recognized by the Youth Council for being the founders to help in getting the Youth Council going. Malcolm Chapman, Mayor Ellander, myself, Lance Lehman, Sean, the director, were all recognized during that meeting. One other meeting, one of the, one of the other things I want to bring up about that Youth Council, they talked in our last meeting about how they were, they have a subcommittee working on mental health. They created a subcommittee working on mental health, and these are the kids working together. And they're talking about doing podcasts and preventative stuff for, for the young people in the community. I mean, they're really moving forward with this. I can report more on that later on, but the, the podcasts, you know, I had to ask some questions on what they were talking about, but that must be something that's really in these days. So, but they're talking about preventative, or getting the information out there, by that way. So the other meeting I had, another Zoom one, was YFS Program Committee meeting. And they discussed, and we discussed about reopening YFS programs. And they, I didn't write down the date, but they're going to start reopening following guidelines that they've come up with, with smaller number of people, precautions. I mean, some, I didn't, I don't, I don't have those. It's, it's going to be the standard is what most people are. So, but it's going to be reduced numbers, and they're going to see how that works. With that, that's it.
You sure?
Yes, I wrote it down.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we go to vouchers, if you want to do those.
Make a motion to approve the vouchers and the amount of.
You got to do the motion. I've got to abstain, sir. Sorry.
Oh, you have to.
Abstain.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Dealing with the vouchers, Commissioner Haddcock will need to abstain from the vote on, on voucher to the Price Motel. Any discussion or motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ross Connect. Further discussion? Call the roll.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Motion carried. One abstention, Commissioner Haddcock.
Thank you. Next, we will have a five-minute break. We all okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to take a ten-minute break.
Five minutes. Motion by Ross Connect.
You take five, I'll take one.
Okay, ten. Second by?
Second.
Drews. Roll call. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move to come back to regular session.
Second.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Roll call, please. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to go in the Board of Adjustment?
So move.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. Roll call, please. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock. Motion carries.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Jason Thunison, County Planner. Agenda item A is variance twenty-dash-zero-six. The applicant is Zona Zuniga. She's in the audience if you have any questions for her. She has submitted variance twenty-dash-zero-six to allow lot size less than forty acres in the General Agriculture District. The purpose of the variance is to allow the applicant to bring a legally described government lot into compliance with the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance requires the Board of Adjustment to determine that four specific criteria are met. Those four are on the screen for your review. I'll read the staff's response, starting with number one. The subject property is flat grassland without any exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting. The buildable space in the parcel does not appear to be limited. Standard quarter section is a quarter of a mile square. A standard quarter-quarter is a sixteenth of a mile square. Any quarter-quarters that were less than forty acres are named as government lots. So when this lot was established, it was thirty-four-point-three-two acres. Number two, the variance to lot size would not grant any use, which is otherwise excluded from properties zoned as General Agriculture District. Number three, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require existing properties to meet minimum lot size requirement of forty acres in the General Agriculture District, or be rezoned to appropriate zoning district. And lastly, number four, granting this lot size variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, as staff has not received any calls, or letters, or complaints, or concerns. If approved, variance twenty-dash-zero-six would allow thirty-four-point-three-two acre lot in a General Agriculture District, which is not in harmony with the zoning ordinance. As the property sits today, it is vacant of structures and utilities, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and no concerns or objections were received. Current and future land use of the surrounding properties within a two-mile radius are identified as General Agriculture District. The applicant has chosen to request this variance in lieu of a rezone and comprehensive plan men, comprehensive plan amendment in order to avoid spot zoning in the area. If the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance twenty-dash-zero-six, staff does not recommend any conditions be included.
We have a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by LaCroy. Does the applicant want to speak? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Just a question. By going by variance, it just, what's it do? Is it quickening the process relative, relative to going through a rezone and so forth?
Right. In this case, it's just more or less keeping the zoning in harmony out there and avoiding spot zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Roll call, please. DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddcock.
Aye. Motion carries. You are approved. Thank you. Have a good day. You too. Item B.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christina Proetti, County Planner. Item B is variance requested. request twenty dash zero seven. The applicant, Mark Kiefer, is requesting to reduce the minimum required section line setback from fifty-eight feet to thirty-three feet to bring an existing, um, shop into compliance. I will list the criteria for the variance request. Um, one, is that specific circumstances or conditions such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist. Uh, staff has verified that there are no particular physical conditions which warrant approval of the variance request. Um, however, the barn has been, or, excuse me, the shop has been, um, in that spot for over forty years. Uh, two, that the variance does not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This setback variance would not grant to use, which is otherwise excluded from properties zoned as General Agriculture District. Three, that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Um, first, strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet or exceed the fifty-eight-foot setback, um, from the section line. And two, the applicant has stated that the shop has been there for over forty years. It's currently in use, and that it would be impossible to move and then recover from, financially from the loss. Lastly, that granting of a variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. One, granting the setback variance would allow for a reduced section line setback in General Ag District zoning, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, at the time of this staff report, staff has not received any complaints or comments from the public regarding this request. Um, we did get a comment back from Highway. Um, generally, they are opposed to variance requests, but this one, they said, since they are not gonna be encroaching into that thirty-three feet, they were not opposed to it. However, um, City, of Rapid City, was opposed because in their future plans, um, they have a hundred-foot right-of-way, and it would eventually encroach into that for their future plans, but again, the structure's been there for over forty years. So.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner DeSanto?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Roskinak. Do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Um, Commissioner Drews?
This has been there that long. How come this is just coming now? There's some, been some change that's taking place there?
Honestly, I'm not sure how it came to light with us. Um, I was just deciding the staff report. Um, I, I do not know how it came to light.
There was two conflicting, um, well, the owner and the property next to her had some conflicting issues, and so they needed to resolve the issue, bottom line, and this had to come into compliance.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak?
If I understand, the building is currently forty years old, and I, I guess, and the city's saying down the road, we might, you know, have an arterio there, so maybe we, I can approve this building, leaving it there, but I would, maybe we need to put a clause in there where they can't replace that building, should that building become obsolete, because after forty years, that building's only got another twenty years' life expectancy, so I think we need to make sure that if that building gets to the point where it's got to be tore down, that it, one cannot be replaced within that, uh, envelope.
Yeah, that would be prudent.
Um, Brittany, just a, just a question. Sorry. So, with this, are we gonna have to vacate anything next in order for this barn to stay there, or, um, Mr., Commissioner Roskinak said if they, um, basically tear the barn down, or it deteriorates, that we shouldn't, he doesn't want it replaced?
Right. So this actually encroaches right up to the section line right-of-way, so essentially it would be a zero-foot setback. Uh, in General Agriculture, it requires a twenty-five-foot setback, so that's where the fifty-eight feet comes from. So you're actually asking for the setback to be right up to the section line right-of-way. Um, and typically, the variances only apply, um, to the structure, this existing structure, so that could be the condition of approval, then that way, if they were to build another structure, it would have to be in compliance with the current setbacks. Uh, at this time, if, because it's part of the city's MPO and their future transportation plan that would require a hundred-foot setback, um, that structure was there prior to that, um, transportation plan being in place. Uh, so essentially, this variance would actually kind of help that property owner in that.
So bottom line, that stipulation could be added to it, so if they ever replace the barn, it would have to meet that hundred-foot setback.
Fifty-eight feet.
Fifty-eight feet, okay.
Or.
Madam Chair?
Or such time that the city wants to move forward unexpectedly, uh, then that might trigger a mechanism, or they might have to do something. But I don't think that's gonna happen, though.
Correct. Right now, there isn't anything in place that would garner our office to look at that. That doesn't say that that won't happen in the future. Um, so if that structure were to be removed, it may have to meet that, um, setback based on the city. If there's changes in things in the three-mile or one-mile, um, area, so that would actually have to be taken into consideration in the future also.
Okay. Commissioner La Croix?
You guys answered my questions.
Okay. Commissioner DeSanto?
I would amend my motion to include that condition, that if the barn fails, or they want to replace the barn, that they would need to respect that fifty-eight-foot setback.
Okay. Do we have the applicant in the audience? Okay?
Who made the second on that?
Oh, it was. Ron. Roskinak. Yes.
You okay?
You agree?
I'll, uh, second third amendment.
He's the one that made the amendment? Okay, thanks, Gary. Did you want to speak, ma'am, on the, you're the one that has the, the barn here? Okay, come on up. So what's, what's your name?
My name is Megan Kiefer. I'm Mark Kiefer's daughter.
Okay, Megan Kiefer. So, Ms. Megan, so what they're saying, uh, Commissioners are saying is when that barn fails, or basically, uh, you want to replace the barn, it will have to meet the hundred-foot setback, or a hundred-foot, fifty-eight-foot setback?
Yeah.
Okay, you understand that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, uh, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we need to close board of adjustment.
So move.
Second.
Moved by La Croix, second by Roskinak. Uh, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries. Ms. Brittany?
Good morning Commissioners. Good morning Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Uh, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda through request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item C is minor plat, NPL twenty dash thirteen, for DICK COMPASS, and approval is recommended.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Hold on just a sec. Is there any items, is there, is there anyone from the public who wish to remove any item, item C, from the planning consent agenda? If not, is there a Commissioner that would like to remove item C from the agenda? If not, we have a motion by Ron Roskinak to approve.
Second.
And second by La Croix. Any other discussion? Not? Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries. Regular agenda D.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thonison, County Planner. Agenda item D is rezone twenty dash zero three. The applicant is Rich Sturkle. He's in the audience if you have any questions for him. Uh, he's requested to rezone approximately ten acres from limited agriculture to suburban residential district. Uh, purpose of this request is that he's currently working through the city of Rapid City to subdivide the property.
Okay.
As it sits today, the property is zoned Limited Agriculture District, consisting of ten acres. It does have special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, there are no structures, there are no existing utilities, and again, it is within the three-mile platting jurisdiction of the city of Rapid City. Uh, current zoning on the screen on your left is, uh, contains General Agriculture, Limited Agriculture, Low Density Residential, Suburban Residential Land Plan Development Districts. Uh, future land use, as you can see on your right, is low, uh, suburban residential district for the most part. Uh, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and no objections or concerns were noted. And with that, staff is recommending approval of rezone twenty dash zero three.
Move for approval.
Moved by La Croix? Second by Roskinak. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews?
Just a question. Is all of the property, uh, within that three-mile limit, or is it just a portion of it?
I'm sorry, sir?
Apparently, this property is within the three-mile limit.
Of the city of Rapid City, yes.
Of the city of Rapid City?
Correct.
Is all of the property within that three-mile limit, or is just a portion of it in that?
Uh, the entire property's within three miles of Rapid City.
Yeah.
Is that the circle that's around there on the current zoning? Is that three miles? Is that just?
No, I actually base that on a half-mile. That's just to give a visual for the radius of the zoning that's around it.
Thank you, sir.
Right.
Okay, do you have a motion in a second? Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners.
All right. Uh, Christina Proetti again. Um, item E is Layout Plan twenty dash sixteen. On June tenth, twenty twenty, the applicants, James and Marilyn Dean, have requested to reconfigure lot lines for the subject properties to create lots. Lot A, Lot B, Lot C of GMD subdivision and tract five R of Storm Hill subdivision. Uh, proposed Lot A will have approximately three acres. Proposed Lot B will have approximately six point seven-six acres. Uh, proposed Lot C will have approximately three acres, and proposed tract five R will have approximately six point seven-six acres. The subject properties are currently zoned as low-density residential, and there are no, there is no special flood hazard area on them. Um, Lot A, Lot B, Lot C of GMD subdivisions, um, total approximately ten acres. A rezone or lot size variance would be required, um, as well as a comprehensive plan amendment. On June tenth, the applicants did apply for a rezone request, um, as well as a comprehensive plan amendment, which will be heard right after this. Um, and last, tract five R of Storm Hill subdivision has approximately six point seven-six acres. All proposed lots are able to gain access from the Palmer Gulch Road. Um, staff has routed this through interdepartmental review, and there are no other items of concern for these properties. Staff does recommend approval.
Motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Roskinak, second by La Croix. Any discussion? Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries. Item F?
All right. So item F is rezone twenty dash zero four and Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty dash zero three. Um, again, for James and Marilyn Dean. They have replied for this on June tenth, twenty twenty. Um, they are requesting to rezone approximately ten acres from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. The applicants are also requesting to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, um, to change the future land use from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District. Um, on the screen there, it shows the current zoning. Um, we have General Agriculture District, Low Density Residential District, and Limited Agriculture District. On the right, on the future land use, we have public land, PUD-sensitive, and Low Density Residential Districts. Staff has routed this through an interdepartmental, interdepartmental review. There are no other items of concern for this property, and staff does recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion by La Croix, second by Roskinak. Discussion? Um, just one, PUD-sensitive? Do we have something in the area with septics, or do they, why was it PUD-sensitive?
The future land use, that's what it was designated in the Comprehensive Plan.
But nothing to do with septics or anything in that area, Brittany? Because usually, when they put PUD-sensitive, remember, it had to do with septics or something that was going on in the area?
Correct. Um, back when they did those zoning designations, they looked at PUD-sensitive because there was concern. Um, there's topographical changes in that area. Um, there is potential for bedrock. Um, so, um, prior, when our Comprehensive Plan was put into place in that PUD-sensitive, we didn't have, um, some of the, um, tools in place, uh, under our two oh four section for our septics. So now, we do look at profile hole and percolation test information. Um, so that is actually an extra protection in those areas, so they'll know whether they're conducive of septics and at what density.
Thank you very much, Brittany. Good explanation. All right. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Motion carries.
Are we getting a little feedback on those? Is there somebody on the phone?
Is there someone on the phone?
Is that why?
There was.
Someone's on the phone?
Sistine is on the phone, so after this item, she will come on the phone.
Okay, thank you.
Item G?
Item G is Layout Plan LPL twenty dash fourteen, to create seven lots in the Cedar Gulch Number Two subdivision. Uh, as the property stands to date, it is in a plan unit development. That plan unit development district was established and approved by the Board of Commissioners on January third, two thousand and six, and January sixteenth, two thousand and seven. Uh, the property as it exists today is a hundred and twenty-one point one-one acres. It is vacant of any structures, and there is a small portion of the property, um, that is in a special flood hazard area. The proposed lots, there are seven lots that are proposed in this, um, subdivision. Each of the lots are approximately one acre. There's two of the lots that are a little larger. Um, those acreages were not, um, put on the plat and will need to be done prior to supplemental of the preliminary plat. Um, this property has been in front of this commission, um, on and off since, uh, two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. Um, there were concerns about the ingress and egress on this road, in Bradsky Road. Um, the Planning Commission did approve this layout plat with conditions, with the condition, uh, that building permits would not be issued on the lots, uh, until that second means of ingress and egress, or vehicular ingress and egress, was established. Um, after the Planning Commission meeting, however, on this item, I did receive an email that was forwarded, um, to the commission, and it was in the packet, um, regarding the water system in that Cedar Gulch Number Two. There is some concerns about connection to these lots and a tap fee, um, for these, so that is something to consider. Um, our subdivision regulations do require, um, that a viable, um, water system be in place, um, for subdivision of property, so that would require another subdivision regulations variance if, um, this plat was approved. But I do want to, um, note that staff did recommend denial of it because it does not meet our requirements for the ingress and egress, but the Planning Commission did recommend approval with eight conditions.
So Brittany, um, you had a recommendation to move to August fourth and a continuance on this, so we could, um, meet with the applicants, so you could meet with the applicants and meet with the Water District and, um, basically see if you can find some solution in there somewhere, so.
Correct. So they also did, um, the Water District did file, uh, a complaint against the plan unit development, so that plan unit development will be in front of the Planning Commission on the twenty-seventh, and then in front of this board on August fourth. The applicant's agent is in the audience if.
Kale, do you have objection to August fourth continuance? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue till August fourth.
Motion by Roskinak, second by Drews. Discussion? Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
La Croix?
Aye.
Roskinak?
Aye.
Haddock? Aye. Item H?
Item H is Layout Plan LPL twenty dash fifteen, to create lots one, two, and three of Tract Lake subdivision. This property is located at the junction of Highway forty-four and Highway three eighty-five. Uh, the Planning Commission did approve a RV, um, park on a portion of this property, uh, back in June, and that, um, request will be in front of the Board of Commissioners, uh, at a later date, um, when, as part of the requirement for an RV park, um, those requirements also have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners. those requirements also have to go in front of the Board of Commissioners. But this property is better known as Kickstand Corner. There is an existing convenience store, gas pumps, and a cell tower on this property. The property owners are looking at developing two, three-acre lots for residential development and then to subdivide off that other portion for the RV park and for the, excuse me, the cell tower that's on that property. So Planning Commission did approve this platte with conditions.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Brittany, just, that property, it seems to me that the underground fuel tanks failed at one time and they had to be filled with sand. And then the operator actually had above-ground fuel tanks. So relative to the permit, uses a filling station or C-store, the state would make sure that if they tried to put underground fuel tanks in there, that that water table is not there, that wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to do that. So the state will regulate that, right?
Correct. The underground fuel storage, they can only be in the ground for 20 years. That is regulated through the state. There are some permitting requirements that they would have to actually utilize those tanks for a fuel station. That convenience store, they are in the process of converting it. They want, they're updating it. They will have a small bar and convenience store in that location. This has been in front of the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners on several occasions over the last 20 years for an RV park and for this type of use. They are just looking to subdivide the small portion of this off for two residential lots in addition to the highway service lot. When they do subdivide those, they will have to be rezoned. But in, a lot of the property in the adjacent area is utilized for residential use. So it would be in harmony of how property is being used in the area.
Commissioner Ross Connect, can I follow up?
Uh, nope. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ross Connect, second by LaCroy.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So access to those lots is gained how?
Currently, it is off of Highway 385 through, in those existing approaches. There's two approaches. Highway, or the DOT has approved an approach for the new lots. It will be a shared approach. Right here. And those two approaches that are for the convenience store and stuff will have to be combined into one. So one is going to be abandoned and the one farthest to the south and the west is going to be widened.
I see it now.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thanks for the update. I, you know, this property's got some great potential. And if somebody comes in and does some work on it, I think it'll be added attraction to our area. So I'm glad to see some stuff finally moving forward with it.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Any other discussion? No, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries.
Item I, Ms. Brittany.
I'm just getting up an example here, so. Anyway, item I is first reading of ordinance amendment 08-20-03 to amend Section 309-C-6 for yard building setback exceptions to replace and supersede Section 309-C-6. Currently, as this reads, it says accessory buildings shall not be located in any required front yard. And so I was trying to get up an example of what that means. In some of the zoning districts, this is just not, I guess, applicable or appropriate, I guess would be a good word to say. As it stands right now, if someone wants to put a garage in their, what we consider a front yard, they would have to come to this board to get a variance. And you did see a couple of those on other agenda items. They were aware that this was going to happen, but they didn't want to wait until this ordinance amendment went through. But what it requires, I'm trying to see if I have one. So let's say that this is a home and they wanted to put their garage right here. They would have to come and get a variance from this board if you take the interpretation of this ordinance. So we wanted to update this. So in some of the agriculture districts and some of the larger lots, it makes sense that the driveways and the barns would be there. So we just added in residential zoning districts, less than one acre. Our staff's belief is the intent of that was not to allow carports and sheds and front yards in higher-density residential districts, not to prohibit or preclude barns and sheds being on larger lot agriculture, agricultural lots. So that's what this amendment is for, is to kind of clarify that, which, which what we believe is the original intent of that requirement.
Discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? No, roll call, please. DeSanto?
Aye.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye. Motion carries.
Item J, please.
Item J is ordinance amendment 08-20-04 to amend Section 511 fees to replace and supersede Section 511 fees. This was done to amend this section to update and alphabetize this section. We did make some changes in this section and I'll go through those. And if there's any specific questions to any of those changes or any of the items in here, just let me know. Or if you want to go through page by page, what would be a simpler process? Or what is the board's wish?
How do these compare to the city?
Well, the way that the city determines building permits, they have a, you know, for the first $100,000, they do it at a percentage. And for every cost after that, it's a different percentage. What we had did is on this, we had changed, oh, let's see. The biggest change that we've had for ours was under number six for residential and non-commercial building or structure. It's $25 or .004 of construction costs, whichever is greater. Right now, the construction cost was determined internally. It was based on, it was somewhat subjective based on what was assumed was cost per square footage of construction in the area. And staff did some research to find out where that .004 construction cost actually came from. Because that's how our building permit fees are assessed. And if you go to, in the back of your packet, under the International Code Council, that building valuation data, that factor is based on what our budget is and based on the number of building permits or the taxable value of our building permits. So they assume that our budget and our taxable value of our building permits is about 4.4% essentially. So that's where that calculation factor comes from. If you look on that back page of the ICC valuation, they actually have a valuation that is nationwide. This is basically an average of what people are paying per square foot for construction. So in lieu of a bid from a contractor, we could use that, those calculations. I guess the biggest way to, or the, excuse me, the.
Madam Chair. Brittany, what's the VA acronym? On that building code tabulation? You got TV, VB, VA. This is where you got the highlighted unit cost?
The highlighted, oh, the VA?
Yeah.
That's the classification of homes.
The what?
So how they classify, the International Building Code, how they classify what class of homes they are. So if you look at that VA, that's the standard classification of the types of homes under the building code that are built in Pennington County. So for single-family residences.
So it's a quality rating?
Yes.
Okay.
And one, one question, sorry. The operating permit on wastewater treatment, does everybody pay an operating permit? Or why do you have the $20?
The $20 is the operating permit fee. That was something that was put in as part of the pump and inspection. When we issue the operating permit, that's the permit fee for that permit.
But you already charge them basically to have it pumped or inspected. Why would you, why would we still need the $20 fee?
The $20 is essentially an administrative fee because there is some mailing requirements and things like that. Because we take in most of the mailing, collecting the fees. So it's an administrative fee for the issuance of that permit.
And you don't include that in the 275 or the $100 or the 250?
Nope, that's for the new installations only. So the operating permit is for the existing systems, for the pumping and inspection of the existing systems and the issuing of those permits. And then the onsite wastewater system construction permit is for a new installation. So if someone does a repair, has a new installation or a new subject tank, that's a separate permit.
So do they have to pay both?
No. So if you get a new system installed, you automatically get issued an operating permit at the time of the new installation and that's covered under that 275. And then the six years from that installation, when it's pumped and inspected, that's when that $20 would come in for that permit.
So again, you pay the $20 plus the pumping?
Correct.
Which is it, pump?
It depends on where they're located in the county.
What's the average pumping?
I would say 200 to 225.
Madam Chair.
Just, just questioning that because if you pay 200, 225, and then another 20 just for... What do we actually do? So we, we have.
It's for the entering in, it's keeping the database, it's mailing out. Because we have to mail out, we mail out notices when it's time to pump and inspect. So it's the mailing of the notices, it's the staff time, and mailing out invoices.
Plus the 200 and something?
200 doesn't come to us, though.
No, the $200 doesn't come to us. That goes to the individual pumpers.
I can answer that for you, Deb, from some experience.
Okay.
It, it, the $20, it's helpful for maintaining the records because like me, you come in and some property has a septic system in it. I have no information on it, so I come to these guys and they can tell me part of the records. So the maintaining of the records is, I think, essential for, in the future, future owners of properties as they get passed on.
Basically for keeping records of it?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's how I see it. Is, you know, it could be taken, there's probably multiple uses for it, but I think it's a, a good process.
Thank you, Lloyd. And then the PUD, I thought we weren't going to have PUDs?
There will still probably be major amendments to existing PUDs. So those will be in there, but it won't be for any new PUDs. So if you look at.
So you have an application and a major amendment? So we won't have any more applications? We'll just have major amendments or minor amendments?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, because application would be, well, actually, no. Oh, yes, sorry. She's correct. So for the overlay district, that would be the, the fee. So it wouldn't be, since, and our zoning ordinance hasn't changed yet, so we're not taking in any applications for new PUDs. But if they do the PUD overlay, that would be the same fee.
So you might want to put it, PUD overlay?
Add that so people don't think they're still. Under application, add overlay?
Wherever you want to, and take application out of PUD and put it under overlay?
Yes, so the application, we can put in per ends overlay and then the 930 so they know that that's for the overlay. Because you still could have major or minor amendments of existing PUDs because those zoning districts will still exist. So they'll still be able to make some changes at some point to those existing PUDs.
And the stormwater permits, Brittany, you're only chartered 250 and 250 for renewal. Those are large industrial, right?
Correct.
And the small are $100, which, okay. Thank you.
And that, oh, sorry.
Here, LaCroy?
I was just going to ask Brittany, as I look through these, you know, I, I think of some of the labor costs. And, and you, this is pretty much what you guys have done, is went through this process of updating what the costs are going to, that we can do the work and cover our expenses and, and keep the neighborhood safe.
Right. So right now, we didn't have a way to, like I said, they were somewhat subjective, what we charged per square foot. So if someone were to come in and get a building permit for a single-family residence that had a thousand-square-foot home, we were calculating finished square footage at $100 a square foot times, you know, that thousand square feet. Then we, times it times that .004. That's how we were calculating. But the question became, what is that $100?
It's not covering their expenses.
Not only that, but it's not conducive of, you know, what the properties actually are. And it wasn't, in, in staff's mind, fair across the board because someone that might be building a more moderate-type home was being charged the same for a building permit that someone that was building a higher-end type home. There, there wasn't any, I guess, differential between that. So it was more of an average. So someone might have actually built a house that was $80 a square foot and someone that was $300 a square foot. I would venture to guess that that $100 a square foot is extremely low. Even based on ICC, they're looking at 128 to 150 is the cost per square footage. That's a national average.
Yeah, I was looking at, just a glance, in inspection fees. Two, you get two of them for 275. I'm looking at the travel, the knowledge, the work. The internal work that you guys do for all these is, is different for everything. And I, I just want to make sure that we're recouping our costs for our labor and, and for the assistance of, of the service. That, that was probably more of what I was.
Sure. So on that onsite wastewater treatment system, that fee currently is 250 and we bumped it up to 275 just because it does take a little more work with the profile holes. But typically, the environmental planner only does two sites. He does spend a lot of time, you know, on the phone with, you know, installers and things. But I would say that the 275, you know, there's times where they're quite far. But, and then there's some that are closer to town. It just depends.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
You know that multiplier, what is it, .04?
That is that percentage. If you look on the ICC.
My question is, if the building department operates on a $300,000 budget hypothetically and it expects to cover 75% of that from building fees, what percent is our building department trying to capture from their total budget?
Sure.
Relative to the building fees?
Right. So we look at what, we just look under permit fees. We don't look at the overall, or look at the fees, not what we take in for other things. I think our budget is anywhere about $160,000. And then I did the, the total annual construction value over the last five years. It was approximately 30 million. That's at the average of what we calculated it at over the five years. So when you kind of do that factor, that's where you get that .004%.
Yeah, I just wondered, in this example, it's 75%. I just wondered what.
Right. And that, it could be because their fees are higher, is probably why. Our fees, I would say, are pretty moderate, if not low.
So the variables that would change that multiplier would be the total value of the average of the last five years and your budget and the percent of building fees relative to your budget. Okay.
I didn't know how you calculated that either, but that's pretty awesome. Any other questions? Good job, Brittany. Motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second?
Second by Ross Connect. Roll call, please. DeSanto?
Yes.
Drews?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Ross Connect?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Aye.
Motion carries.
One last one. So item K is a request for abatement of a public nuisance for property located at 6480 Greenfield Drive. As it stands right now, our office does not have the authority to abate. The Board of Commissioners can, through ordinance, give our office that ability, but right now, we don't have that. We do need to abate this property. So we are asking that the board give our office that authority to abate this property. It should not exceed, you know, $1,000. Our ordinance enforcement officer is here. He's familiar with this site. We do believe that there will be a, it will be necessary to abate this on a regular basis. There is some history to this property. We, it has been part of complaints over the years. And as it stands right now, it is a nuisance. If you, as you can see from the photos, this complaint, this last complaint did actually come from the Sheriff's Department.
Dwayne, did you want to speak? Come on up. We never get to hear from you much, so. Can you give them some history, a little bit on the property?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dwayne, the ordinance officer for Penning County. This property has had at least four complaints in the last, since 2018. Two of those have come from the Sheriff's. Two of those have come from the Sheriff's Department when they go out to do, uh, some random checks on the individual that lives there. Uh, as Brittany was stating, this property will just be a continuous problem due to the person will just not do anything.
Comply.
Uh, he has not ever answered us, never sent a letter back, phone call, and anything we do send to him, it's just returned, uh, no bit. So, this is just gonna be a continuing process that we have to go through with this individual.
Is there's anything else we can do since it's problematic, and it will continue to be problematic?
I did check with the DSS, because he does have a person that works with him a little bit. Uh, however, he does not have a caseworker, so they're not able to help us out with that, and he refuses to get one. They can't do anything further on that. So, we're kind of at a, kind of stuck point, if you wanna put it that way. We're, this is kinda coming up to our only options.
Ms. Michelle.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office, to answer your.
Look like a bandit.
I haven't seen his, I'm like, it's like, you don't, don't go into a bank or anything. Sorry. That's all right. I, we've, in fact, had the same question. What can we do moving forward so we don't have to continue to bring these types of matters before the commission? By statute, uh, this commission does have the authority to determine, declare a nuisance and abate, and have that assessed against the property. The problem is, within our current ordinances, that authority has not been transferred in any manner to the planning department. So, that's something we're gonna be looking at when the public nuisance ordinance is revised, to actually perhaps give planning department authority up to $1,000, something like that, to bait these types of nuisances.
Or just have, you have the authority, but have, well, basically, a sheet that says, if you'd like to take this to the Board of Commissioners, blah, blah, blah. I think, I can't remember. Do they have that at the city?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, mo, most departments have a budget for abatements, and it's set aside so that you can act quickly instead of having to delay it more often. And that may, with these new ordinances, that may help our community, because it's available. You, you've done your notices, now it's time to take action if it's under a certain amount, you know, I'm, so that may be something in the future we're gonna have to budget for, if we have. And, so, we may have to get some information on how many of these are out there. Are we not doing them because maybe we don't have the money? Normally, we would. Uh, but it'd be nice to have some information on some of the nuisances that we're, we're seeing in our surrounding area, uh, report.
And the bottom line is that they can, if they disagree with the abatement, they can come before the Board of Commissioners, that kinda thing.
Yes.
Instead of, we just have the authority, and then they're just done.
Madam Chair.
I mean, Commissioner, Planning Commission, um.
Dwayne, do you know if the property is occupied?
It is. Uh, the individual, he does get random checks by the Sheriff's Department from time to time, uh, due to the nature of who he is and what, what goes on there without going into any further health issues and stuff with him. But they do, do, uh, random checks on him from time to time. So, he is there. Uh, we receive phone calls from him quite constantly, from my understanding. So, when they don't hear from him after a while, that's when they actually go do checks on him.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mission. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by La Croix.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
DeSanto.
Aye.
Drews.
Aye.
La Croix.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for answering that, Dwayne, and Ms. Brittany. You're doing a great job, Ms. Brittany, with your team, Jason, uh, Dwayne, and Ms. Christina, um, because did good today. We really appreciate it, coming along in that department, uh, a whole lot. So, we appreciate everything you guys do. Next, we'll go into executive session, uh, on, okay, Holly.
Items from the public, Madam Chair.
Oh. Items from the public?
We got public?
That'd be John.
I'll be public today. So, I, I wanted to follow up quickly, oh, again, John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources. So, thank you for the questions earlier about the compensation stuff. So, I did run back and, and grab some data. And Mr. DeSanto, Commissioner, I'll send this to you in an email, so.
Thank you, John.
Yeah. And again, it's, it's based upon what could happen, not on potential actual. So, if I could, Commissioners, the questions were about, um, how these new ratings could potentially impact the, the earnings for those people in those positions. Again, with the new positions, they don't currently exist in the highway department structure. But, the administrative assistant, looking across to the other departments that currently have those, this rating will actually be a $2.30-something decrease.
So, the first two are lower, and the next three are?
And the next three are actually slightly higher. So, you'll notice a 10 cent an hour increase for the heavy mechanics. There isn't anybody that's at the base, so nobody's gonna see a, a change based upon this rating. Um, the incumbent from the office manager position will see about a 40 cent increase over what they would have received under the current structure. Uh, and a civil engineer is a new position. But it shows you, on the far-right margin, uh, what the current pay rates would be. And then, just to the left of that, shows you what the new hourly rates would be for those positions. But I wanted to be sure you had that.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
I do, I do.
Mr. Roskinick.
On that current, um, for example, the B-23, it says 2247.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be the starting on a seven-step scale?
That's the starting on our current scale.
Okay, yeah. I realize that'll get modified, but that's just so.
Yeah, and it's a 34-step scale right now, but what you're seeing is a decrease in the actual starting rates for those first two positions. Um, pretty substantial. Will that impact anybody? No, 'cause actually, it's for new hires. So, this won't have any impact at all on the existing people that are in those roles, or will be in those roles. The apprentice highway worker, and that's the one that's probably more important, um, to be noted with that, the highway department will most likely still need to do the step increases that you approved earlier at the meeting today in order to get back to that current starting rate. They currently start people at 1848 in entry-level highway position. Um, this is an improvement over where they had been rated. It was rated in A-13, which would have been about a $4.50 decrease in starting rate for that position.
Wow.
So, by having it rerated, it's still a decrease of about $2 in some sense, $2.20 roughly. Uh, but being able to hire people up to step five will actually allow them to get close to the current rate. It'll still be below, uh, but it at least gives them the flexibility to hire into those positions.
And I appreciate that, John, 'cause that's kinda.
Oh, no, I appreciated the question. Yep, never thought about it. I'm looking at new positions.
Left your message yesterday, just.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah. I thought I'd be better to, to go through this today at the meeting and, and give that explanation versus that, but.
Madam.
No, I appreciated the questions.
Thank you. Commissioner La Croix.
I, I have made the motion to approve this, and one of the re, I didn't get a chance to reason why, is I really like the way they did the organizational chart and the hard work that you guys put into this, because it's great thought into these people's workplace environment, because now you have an apprentice highway worker, someone you can train in, up to level. And the journeyman, titles mean something, and, and I think those are level of work, and, and I think, then lead highway worker. I like that. It gives them someplace to go in, into the future, and I think they, they, clear path to do that.
There's a, a percentage of their current employees that would be maxed out under our current structure. This gives them the opportunity to have something else to shoot for, a process to move up. Um, so, it's thrilling to see what the highway department has done.
Yeah.
And many of our departments have restructured, as with the, the planning and zoning department you just had done with. They've done the same exact thing. They created a whole new structure with three career ladders within their department. This process of, of evaluating and going through the Gallagher study has given us the opportunity to really do things that we might not have considered possible.
I, I agree. You know, I think when this first come out, we got a lot of resistance because change is hard, and, and, but having to come back and rework this, I think, focused more on employees and trying to see what, what they need to be, so I, I agree.
Yes, thank you for that.
Any questions at all, Commissioners?
Oh, perfect.
No, thank you.
Next, we'll go into executive session.
So, move.
Personnel issues. Moved by Drews, second by La Croix. Roll call.
DeSanto. Drews.
That looked like an "I."
La Croix.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
Haddock. Aye.
And it is for personnel issues?
Today's litigation contractual.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
So, it's. SDCL 1-25-2.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion to come out of executive session.
So, move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Moved by Drews, second by La Croix. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.